The teachers came back on Thursday and we would run it on Friday, but the rest of our staff didn't come in till today. And so instead of just having the teachers involved, we felt like if we were able to push it today, we were able to bring much more of our staff into the room. So it was, it was good. I was very, very pleased.
Yes, and I especially like the picture of your daughter with her first year of teaching. She sent the first day. That was so cool.
Well, and I tell you, and it's funny because I came back and Paul Wilson is here as well. And so when I came back to the office after that, he showed me that his daughter who's at Notre Dame. Not the one you taught at, the other Notre Dame, but she was at Notre Dame and actually sent him a photo. Him and his wife, a photo of her first day as well. I just love that. And it's something that, you know, and parents now are so creative. I went online just to look at what they do. I mean, big signs, different, it is, we were not as creative as they were. But we love the fact that, and that's part of community, you know, when that is celebrated, you know, that's just a part of, of just our, our culture and all that. And I just love it.
And when my kids were in school, we didn't do that, but we didn't do gender reveals either like they do now. So.
Yeah.
It's, it was neat. It was neat to see the pictures. Yeah. Okay, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you. I will just say I'm less creative than you, Dr. Goggins. We didn't even have the kids hold the newspaper. We just had birthday school pictures and. Really, other than I just want to wish everyone a, the, the best for the upcoming school year here. There was a lovely congregation this morning that, our speakers and especially Dr. Goggins did a nice job at, but other than that, I have no formal report.
Okay. Okay, um, so this brings us to our first hearing of the public. So if anyone wishes to come forward and speak, seeing no one, we will continue. Um, you've had a chance to read the minutes of the, July twenty second regular meeting. And if there are no additions or corrections. Okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? None? Okay. So. That brings us now, Mr. Hopkins, back to you for your treasures.
Thank you. I have five recommendations in front of the board tonight. I'll briefly go through them. The first one, I have some then and now statements. Again, these are some for services that were done last fiscal year as we close out all of our POs. I just had to reissue some as invoices came in after the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the second one there is I am asking the board to transfer ten thousand dollars from the general fund to the athletic fund. This is for our pool lease. If you remember last year, we renegotiated our pool lease. And we, we had that payment that we make to the city for the use of the pool. Uh, C is a five-year agreement utilizing a software program that we use in the treasurer's office called Bonefish Systems. It's electronic vendor audit system and electronic payroll audit system. Uh, this is one of our ways that we use to help mitigate fraud within the treasurer's office. So as we cut checks, whether payroll or AP, it runs through this system. It looks for duplicate vendors. It looks for names that might be similar to staff, different things like that, just to try to have another layer of protection for the district. Uh, D, we have a student purpose statement and budget. And I know someone had asked me about this earlier in the year when there's like zero revenue, but we have expenditures. Uh, so we carry over money from year to year on a lot of these accounts. So this doesn't reflect what their balance and their account is. So you're just seeing for a one-year snapshot what they estimate revenue or estimate expenditures on. They could be working off donations. They might be working off of carryover from last year. We operate these funds on a cash basis, so they never go in the negative on the cash side. But, uh, you know, they might not have estimated revenues because they're not planning anything at this time. And then finally, I have declaring transportation impractical for a number of students. Uh, these are students who recently notified the district that they would be attending a private school. And so the schools that they're attending have already all been declared impractical. So it's just additional students. There is no change. No, we're not making impractical another school or anything like that. This is just new enrollees to those schools that were already deemed impractical. If there, uh, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, uh, if it so pleases the board, I'm happy to combine five A through five E if you'd like.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations five A through five E?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Thanks for all you do. Thanks for renegotiating, renegotiating that contract with the city. We have a great relationship with the city and happy to be using those facilities for our students.
I would just agree with Joe and it was great to see the mayor, uh, this morning at, um, the county also.
Yeah, I think he likes coming.
He's a former board member though, so.
So you know what? And, and he mentioned this and, and I'm sorry, this is not.
That's okay.
In there, but, um, what I thought was funny that he mentioned today was that, that he had one of our teachers for math and it was Bob Sevack who's coming in for the one year.
Yes.
And he did tell me, mayor, the mayor did say he think he, he thought he got an A in that class.
That's good.
I hope so. He was in the.
I know, that's what I said.
Okay, uh, no further questions or discussions, then roll call please.
Craft, yes.
Lamb, yes. Lizinski?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Goggins.
So six A, I would like to read, and that's our gifts and donations. Uh, we received two donations that are reflected on uh, this agenda this evening. State Street Global Advisors Funds on behalf of Judith Rotkus donated five hundred dollars to the Frank Sarna Memorial Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. And Travel Centers of America, Marion Lowe's donated school supplies, snacks and other caring closet needs for the students in the Westlake City Schools. Uh, Travel Centers of America is very generous. They do run a drive. Um, I don't know if it's still in our gym over there, uh, but Dana has all that laid out. That they donated, it's not quite as much as what we would typically receive, but they said they ran their drive. Um, their drive correlated with the, um, uh, bad weather and power outage. So they didn't quite get what they typically do, but it's still very, very generous and we are very grateful to them.
And could you just explain what that caring closet?
So there are areas that are inside. I don't think we have it in the high school, but I think in the other buildings, uh, we have caring closets where kids can uh, go in and get school supplies, book bags, uh, different types of things like that, snacks. Uh, thought six B, uh, six, actually the, the rest of them on here, um, the directors did share their reports and, um, uh, did explain the different items that are on here. I do have the directors here minus Mrs. Musselman, who is actually at open house, um, with her son Joe over at Westlake Elementary School. But if you do have any questions on any of those agenda items, um, you can ask the directors. You're here to answer. And then Q through U, actually R through U are some amended resolutions, um, for some corrections that were made on those. And Mrs. Pearnot did ask about Q in regard to Dover and Immediate School and the camp in the hop. Um, and they are just doing one date this year. So that was accurate. And we double checked with Dana that they weren't splitting it into two. So I don't know if they've expanded or if they've done it.
I think they have. Uh, if I remember perfectly, last year they said that, uh, there was a second camp that, uh, they were working with. So.
Okay.
Everyone goes all at one time.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
And, uh, no, it's not true. There's no video of me doing the zip line last.
I have a feeling there is. Um, in regard to the, the recommendations, uh, six A is always nice to keep separate.
Right.
But if it's, uh, uh, good with the board, six B through U would be appropriate to.
Okay, good. Okay. Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations six A? Give some donations.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, big thank you to all of those generous people and especially I always love to see, uh, the Frank Sarna fund mentioned because that's, that's so moving at, uh, the scholarship presentations. Um, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call please.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, so like, keep getting myself up here. I'm sorry. Uh, superintendent's recommendations would be six B through six R?
You.
You. You. Sorry about that.
So moved. Second.
Um, any questions, comments?
I have a, uh, just a question or thought for Mr. Zagre. And it has to do with, uh, parent square. What's a good way for us to, um, recognize or observe say the success or usage of parent square as the year continues? Do you think there'll be a way for us to do that? Or if there are any metrics with regard to that?
Yeah, I think that they do some, they have some important stuff.
Okay.
Their document can get you that.
Awesome.
Um, or I can provide it for them to provide it.
Super.
They, they have some very nice crap that needs.
Nice. I know we're all excited for that new, um, program and it sounds like it's going to be a great success and it'd be good just to see some data on that as the year progresses.
And it's getting a lot of use.
I can attest to that, uh, Mr. Craft. Uh, I were using it for my daughter's volleyball, my son's football. Now I've got the high school and LBMS on it. So I know Mr. Shaw's been sending stuff out uh, with regards to the classes and their, uh, you know, their, uh.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how personal the information is, but you know, maybe at some point, if, if you wouldn't mind it, you know, from a parent's point of view, maybe just sharing that at a board meeting, I'd, I'd be interested to check it out.
I'm still learning this.
Understood.
I got my twelve-year-old teaching me.
One, one thing to point out, and, and we did get some feedback today that was very helpful is with all those going out, we have some parents saying, oh, my gosh, I'm getting all these notifications.
Yeah.
And one of the things we have to share out is you can shut off notifications. Yeah, you can have it so that it's just like Facebook and you open it and check it when you want to check it. It's kind of like with any app that you have.
Sure.
You can turn off the notifications. And if you want to look at, you know, Twitter or Instagram or Facebook or any type of thing like that, you don't have to get notifications. And the only notifications that you can't turn off are the emergency ones. So those are the only ones you can't turn off. So we may have to work with our parents and just let them know. Because they call it how you digest it. So you know, you, some people, you can set it up to where at, at night you get a, a daily report of the things that were posted, or you can get none. And then just kind of go through and, and look at it. So that's one thing we're going to want to communicate out because when we do have a lot of people using it, we don't want parents to just continually get buzzing on their phone.
The one thing I sort of think about is when you say, you know, the only thing they can't turn off is when you send information out in an emergency setting in. It sort of reminds me of when the, um, Amber, do you all remember when the Amber Alert started on phones? And everybody was like, what is this? And it's like at two in the morning. Um, and you're kind of like, what woke me up? And everybody's phone went off at the exact same time. Um, and it's not going to be like that. It's just going to be a, a message alert saying.
Like you can get a text or a phone call, like if we're going to do a snow day, I can send it. So one of the things I could do is send the snow day. And one of the things that they recommend when you do the snow day, typically I would like record the phone call, but what parent square recommends is that I actually type it and you let the computer read it. Because if I type, uh, the, the content, then it can translate it. They can't translate a recording in my voice. So one of the things they could do is, so then when I do a snow day or any type of calamity day, I should type it because then whatever language you have your phone set to.
Yes.
Uh, or your, your power school probably sets for parent, parent square set to, but doesn't parent square get it from power school?
They do, and, and. But what, uh, the parents that have, uh, another preferred language other than English will do is will, they'll tell parent square that I'm an Arabic speaker or I'm a Ukrainian speaker. And then, then it'll automatically translate things from the emergency alerts, things that are posted and messages sent to them. All of those things.
Yeah. So just an interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting. I think about, um, I, I've mentioned you before with playing in Thailand, I communicate with her and her parents sometimes over Facebook or Instagram, but they'll post something in Thai, maybe want to hit a button and ask for the translation. And I get it. Sounds like it's similar.
Similar.
Gotcha.
I'm sure we saw a huge uptick in usage, uh, what, last Thursday or Friday when the teams came out? Cause I know that, uh, as soon as the word, uh, started filtering out to my son, he needed to know what team he was on immediately and it was listed on.
Yes. Yeah, when they, when, uh, when the school building, start to clean out schedules and that kind of stuff, we get a lot of back to school.
Yeah.
Information updates and all that stuff.
You anticipate that there will be families that will just not engage it?
Yes.
Okay.
We think we'll have families and staff not engage it.
Okay.
And, um, one of the nice things about it and the way it's set up is if a teacher and, and I, and I'm not picking on high school math teachers, but let's just say I'm a high school math teacher. I use Google Classroom. I have no interest in, in ever logging on to, to parent square. I don't send out photos from my class or anything like that. But then a parent goes in to parent square and they use it. And then they send a message to the teacher through parent square. It goes, it then gets pushed into the person's email. And then the teacher can reply in the email and the parent can receive it in parent square. So there won't be that breakdown in communication if the teacher does not engage with.
Sounds like a powerful tool.
And I just got my daily digest.
Yeah, see?
For today, so.
I would like to see what that looks like. You want? Yeah. Um, but anyway, sorry, you're, you're in the middle of.
So it looks like it's going to be a nice tool that we can really utilize.
I pass this down to.
Oh, sure. Just don't look at anything.
I just say mine, well, wait, we've filled it with yours. With, you probably have more than the others.
And so what's, you said the daily digils?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that a daily email? Are you saying, oh, let's go on I?
And you only get that if something was posted. So for example, I'm only in the high school. I haven't gotten anything because Mr. Woods hasn't posted anything since last week.
Monday schedule.
It's well, very much is, it very much is like Facebook where it will only be if you're part of that. If, if a coach, you know, you only get it if you're part of that team or the building or the classroom, however it's, what groups are set up.
Well, and I hope it's a resource that our teachers and staff really utilize because it can be a great tool for them.
Yes.
Think they're excited about it.
Yeah.
Okay, and I have just one quick question about, um, item I, um, the mentors, mentees and then the building buddies.
Yep.
Uh, so the building buddies, it's staff that are already experienced, that's new to our volunteer. And of course the mentors, mentees are brand new. Um, I don't remember the building buddies that much from the past, but.
Of course you can. Why the directors are here. You want to come up to the podium, Mr. Maybert? It's already nice to see you.
Had a good day speaking.
All right.
Um, a few years ago, when Patrick McMarlowe was the president, we were going through the contract. He said, Bob, I never knew this. Did you know this about the contract that uh, new staff who are not resident educators, they already have their license should get a, a, a building buddy, for lack of a better word, um, of current staff, just to kind of show them the ropes. So it's been in the contract since 2018, but we really haven't implemented it until about two years ago. And they seem to like it.
What do you think about building buddies?
Oh, I, I think it's great. I don't know.
I'm looking for a better name if you got one.
No, that's, that's a good name, but I just thought maybe we should explain it to.
Yeah, that's what it is. It's, it's for.
If they have a question or.
Yeah, it's for teaching staff who already have their five-year license, um, who are getting acclimated. They're new to the district, so we pair them up with a veteran teacher here just to show them little things like, hey, here's where we made copies. Or if you need big jobs, send them over to the copy center or you know, here's where you get your mail every day and things like that.
That's, that's a great.
I like building buddies. Make you think of the best buddy program.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thanks.
Yeah. That's my vote.
Okay.
Nice. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the explanation. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, under item, I think we're voting on item U in this also.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to, uh, say that Tim Corba is a wonderful coach. Uh, I've known him and his wife uh, and his kids still in a park since they moved into the district and him is outstanding and we're really lucky to have him. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing what he does with our freshman football players.
Good. It's nice to hear.
Okay, that's it. Okay, um, roll call please.
Just a reminder, this is six B through six U. Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Pearnot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and that brings us to our second hearing of the public. If anybody wishes to come forward and nobody's coming up to the podium, so, uh, brings us to board comments if we have any more comments. And we're not all commented out.
I would love to walk through GIS at some point because I know that had a pretty expensive paying job and whatnot and we're just waiting for that to.
It took us about before and after for ones too, because it's good to see.
And what's the status of the, uh, uh, entryway there that?
You talking about building a vestibule?
Yes.
Yeah, we do not. We, we did apply for a grant to try and get a vestibule there. We did not receive the grant. Um, and that would have to be part of more of a capital project and because that, that would be a pretty significant.
Okay.
Cost to put on. It's on, it's something we'd like.
It's on our wish list?
It is.
Okay. Any other? Board comments?
What's the difference between board comments and board items? Board items are actionable items that you'd be voting on.
Okay.
So in the past, you've had superintendent treasure contracts under board items. Uh, you could have things, items that you need.
Policy.
Policy would be.
And I just want to make sure I'm speaking the right spot.
Yes.
Um, I've had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to attend the alumni meeting. Thank you very, everyone for putting together, or Barb for putting together the table for the Alumni Association, uh, dinner coming up here in.
October, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it looks like it's going to be a fun evening and you've got a wonderful, uh, group of alumnus that they're, uh, recognizing. So um, you know, along with that, obviously having a daughter playing volleyball, I think I missed a volleyball game yet. So I believe that they are three and four with wins over Midview, Hathaway Brown, um, Alaria, the only one I lost was to, uh, North Royal Ten. And then with my son in football and seventh grade.
Are they three and one?
Three and one, yes.
Oh, yeah, you said three and four.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
My bad. That's okay. I'm trying to think of the total number of games they've played or matches. Then my son's played, uh, football and unfortunately the Westlake seventh grade team lost to the village.
Whoa.
But, I will.
Well, there's always next year.
We'll get them next year, definitely. And then ironically enough, I just came from the open house over at the LBMS and Mr. Shaw and Mr. Barry Boo doing a nice job and, uh, kids are looking excited.
Tad's looking more excited.
Thank you, Brett. Uh, any other comments? Um, let's see, do we have a? Um, when is the homecoming parade? It's up October, it's the beginning, no, September.
No, it is, it is October twentieth.
The same day as the Rotary Golf, no, it's.
Oh, it was last year, wasn't it? The parade is on the fourth, Friday, October fourth, and the antique fire engine has been already been reserved.
Okay, yes.
And bar has candy.
I have lots of candy, yes. Okay, so Friday, October third. I was just thinking we were upon it and I left off the whole month of September, so, uh, we have time to talk about that. Okay, any other?
Oh, one last one.
Yes.
I did go to the football game on Friday night at Midview, um, came up a couple touchdowns short, but the band sounded amazing. I mean, uh, I was there with a friend whose niece plays in the band and he was just awestruck by it. So the band really sounded, you know, great, not only from the stands, but you know, when they did their performance at halftime too.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
And I believe Friday is the first home game and it's the Demon Spirit Rally kickoff.
We just hope for good weather.
There's always the weather and it's always sung in Westlake.
Okay, anything else? And moving on to board items then, of which there are none tonight. Um, so that will bring us up to a, is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we will adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official. Roll call please.
To enter into executive session at six thirty-one PM, Purena?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And no action will be taken. So we are adjourned.